Recording in progress.
Yeah, it was better than here. There was two weeks, not my favorite.
We're live, ma'am.
Okay. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome to the Town Council of the Ratcham Council Meeting. I hereby call this meeting to order at exactly 7:00 PM on March 14th, 2023. We do have a forum and we will develop a business. Let the record also show that Town Attorney Gray and Clerk Newman Schlander are also in attendance. Please stand for the plaid dual regents.
My pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, and one God, and indivisible, with the thirty and ten justices writ.
Thank you. Let's see. The first item of business is to reconvene from our workshop to the regular meeting. Can I get a motion to reconvene? Second? I'll second. It's been moved as seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Hearing that opposed, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is to adopt the agenda. But first, is there anything from the consent agenda, council that needs to be brought up or? Hearing that none, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'm going to adopt the agenda.
Second?
I'll second.
It's been moved as seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Hearing that opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to adopt the consent agenda. Any motion?
I'll move to approve it. Uh, or accept the...
Adopt the consent agenda.
Second?
I'll second.
It's been moved as seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Hearing that opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Now I'll proceed to the first item of my business. And that will be the ordinance 2023 dash zero one, Councilman Ellis.
Yes, this is the building inspector, the executive member. Uh, I got a big... Ordinance 2023, we have one title for administration, chapter thirty-three, town organizations. This is the motion that makes the building inspector, executive member of the planning and zoning board. Your order unchanged. Come on to Town Council, I'll enter the second meeting of the ordinance 2023, gas zero one. Title two, administration, chapter thirty-three, town organizations as written.
Second?
What second?
Okay. It's been moved as seconded. Did you get that? Any questions from the audience on this ordinance? Tell the ordinance your name, please. I know we go over, but we're trying to have our list today. Thank you.
Uh, District Lee Anderson. I thought the Bill Dublin, Inspector, who I was an executive member. And I don't remember anything in ordinances about that. About that as such a... I had a... As an executive member. So I was wondering why we're doing that.
Okay. The building inspector was not a member of the planning and zoning board. But they did his end of meetings as an executive member. You are used to provide information to the board. And you don't have a role. So can he answer questions? What's going on on the building? If you could accept it. Did that answer your question?
Kind of like...
We just make it as a joke.
Any other questions? Counselor?
I can tell. Uh, I don't want to say this, but I'm here. And I might not be very far, but I have had experience with it. Great. And I just want to say this awesome.
Oh, thank you very much. That's very nice.
I'm in the process of building it.
Right.
He's come out several times.
That's good. Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, any other questions? Hearing that none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Hearing that opposed, motion carries. You don't ask. Uh, the next item on the agenda is ordinance 2023 dash zero two. And I will just quickly explain this one. This is just a clarification to our ordinance on dog animals. And we felt the need to define what a leash is because not everyone understands it. So this was to actually define what a leash is. And it passed on the first reading. So if anyone... I'll just give the motion and then we'll kind of go forward. I'm going to Town Council of the Ratcham through the second reading of the ordinance 2023 dash zero two. Title line, general regulations, chapter ninety, animals as written. I'll get a second.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved as seconded. Any questions on this?
Could you hear it?
Come back. There's the definition of a leash.
We're going to read that as well.
It is sad, but we did. So, um, any other questions on this one? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Hearing that opposed, motion carries. Uh, next item on the agenda is ordinance 2023 dash zero three. Councilman Merron?
I have said that the chapter seven to some removal. Um, the only changes we made are a transplination for the spoiler, because we were moving our hair snowing along the roads and the destruction of fire items of snow. And we just added, indeed, since the C title will violate a lot of the words, fifty points or five I B for regulations concerning area burn of fire items.
Okay. To read them, motion.
Um, I need to start our... Or, excuse me. I have moved Town Council of the Ratcham through the second reading of ordinance two zero two, three, dash zero three, title seven, chapter seven, two, so removal as written.
Second? I'll second. Okay. It's been moved as seconded. Any questions from the audience?
I need to... Could you move that? I want to see what you took out. May I have a comment? I'm not sure what I'm going to do. Probably help a little bit. Uh, we spent some time in the water discussing training around fireworks. I'm sure you all have a variable or whether they should only maybe some of you have. Uh, and that has... This... This may not be the place to have a debate. But we can even ensure that there's coordination. If in fact you go ahead with the water board recommendation for changes in our ordinance, there'll all be duplication or something very similar to this. And that is to name the area around the fire, a five-foot radius. That's a tenth of fire. That's different than the one you're having. It's six. And if I agree with the mayor, I have no idea where six came from.
I don't remember.
It is ten.
It is ten.
That's a lot of room for the fire. It also means you need access around the fire, acting as the roles of the fire making from the road to the shade. So I apologize.
Yes. So then to kind of give you the heads up on this meeting, we actually started to put that in this in this section, but it is already in public work. So it was... It made sense to have it in here. So that's why I refer to... Yeah. The... That's where the three-foot is. So obviously we're looking to do it in a...
Five to fifty point of fire.
So, yeah. We find this occasionally where it's several places. So anyway, so we're fixing that. Okay. Any other questions? Counselor? Good. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Hearing that opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is, um, uh, ordinance 2023 dash zero four, Councilman Ellis.
Okay. Ordinance 2023 dash zero four, title fifteen, land usage, chapter one fifty-four zoning. This one changes the placing of signs on public waterway. A better few statements was the signs installed by government... A government agency which owns or holds interest in public property or easements. This is not changed from the first reading. I'm going to Town Council of the Ratcham through the second reading of the ordinance 2023, dash zero four, title fifteen, land usage, chapter one fifty-four zoning as written.
Second? It's been moved as seconded. Any questions from the audience on this? This is the third second reading. No changes. Mr. Counselor?
Does this apply to... Lee Anderson? Does this apply to political sites? Is what it says, they can't put political sites in the U N in order? Is that what it says?
Political signs are forced on.
Is that what the intent is?
Yep.
Sorry, I was in the first reading. But I didn't hear your discussion.
Yep. That is it. Okay. Any other questions? Counselor? Do you have your question?
Yeah. Uh, does this apply to the rod still sites instead of going up to the day of the rod stills and stuff?
On the town, you're probably yes.
So the county have built town?
No. You can put them on front properly. But that's... Any other questions? All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Hearing that opposed, motion carries. Uh, next item on the agenda is ordinance 2023 dash zero five, Councilman Ellis.
Ordinance 2023 dash zero five, title fifteen, land usage, chapter one fifty buildings. This one clarifies, the only change from the first reading to this one is the clarification of wording on the main living floor. This is for homes and existing buildings in excess of five thousand square feet shall be protected by a strict system. And we just said five thousand square feet before. This one, this change, thanks to Rue, clarifies it on the main living floor and five thousand square feet. I'm moving Town Council of the Ratcham through first reading of ordinance 2023 dash zero five, title fifteen, land usage, chapter one fifty buildings as written.
Second? I'll second. Any questions from the audience on this one?
Just give us a background. How does this end up?
Yeah. Also, we have a five thousand square feet, single, sheltered area with no fire.
Um, Mayor, may I clarify some?
Yes.
So this was already changed in another section with the previous ordinance. This, uh, this specific section is the same wording, just in a different section of the ordinance. But this particular section was missed when the other ordinance was updated.
Same as well.
This is just two, two sections saying basically the same thing. One is IRC, one is IBC. And it was just making a match.
Okay.
So if you're not assisting by...
Yeah. It's new.
Just...
This is used to... This will be some of the planning and zoning board. Correct.
Yeah. Just another clarification. Okay. Any other questions? I'm sorry.
It's... Move the... Sure, I'm doing all of the... As I found out already, we know no way.
It's Bill.
Sir, you're saying if you have a... Pretty much never have one in.
I guess I have a question. Because it's already... It's identified in the IRC that it's five thousand square feet. Period. And what we're saying is yes, we've adopted the IRC, but now we're saying five thousand for the main living area. Is that what I understand?
But Kristen just said that it... That wording just missed. Was that accurate there before?
No. So there's two different sections of that ordinance. It's there's the IRC and then the IBC. This specific wording was changed in the IBC, but was not changed in the IRC at the same time. So there's the same wording, um, just in different sections. So it was updated to say main living for in the IBC, but it wasn't changed in the IRC.
In this section.
Right.
So this is just to make the ordinance consistent?
Correct.
But why is that really the... The... The building like a...
I would say because it's already been permitted. And we're just making the change. Correct?
Yeah. This originally was changed, uh, I think last November with the third reading for the, the previous one.
And what I didn't know was it was not necessarily...
Yeah. I don't know.
Did it change in November?
I believe so.
Well, you will look. This is the first reading, so we'll make sure that we...
It was, it was brought to my attention by Chairman Black. Um, he had thought it had been updated and thought that the website wasn't updated. And when I went to investigate, it had been changed in third reading in November, but different section. He was looking at this section, but he had changed the other section.
But the ordinance is not listed by the... TVI of the system.
Correct.
So why do we all say that?
All of this is, like I said, to match what was already changed in November.
Grandfather. Where they had to comply with five thousand square feet in a script system.
I think it's a good question. Yeah. That's a good question. Wasn't that out in the middle? I don't know.
It was a failure. It was omitted last summer.
I don't know. We need to look and see. I had a question about this earlier today, so we will find the answer.
Like, like, it should be forced to comply wherever it might be.
Well, I still have the question of the IRC says five thousand square feet. Why are we saying the main living floor? Why are we saying something different than what the IRC said? So that was my question. But we'll get to the bottom of this, Mr. Sidermay.
I have questions.
All right. Come on up.
Can we go to the...
No, you need to... Appreciate it a little bit.
I don't wish... I'm not having the whole thing in front of me and study it. What section is it? Yeah. I mean, what is... What does the title, uh, say? That this is a...
It's...
Is this a building?
Yes.
So this is new structure?
Yes.
This has nothing to do with being in the or my home?
Yes.
And so the home is built, it's granted.
Yes.
If it's not built, this is a fact.
Correct.
And you're saying the issue on what a permit is kind of a... You say that...
It was approved by the PNC board.
I hate this. It is. If I were to be elected, I'd... Nobody was... None of us. And so maybe it would be said for any, any home being permitted at... You're up on a... Fact, I mean. And then...
In your explanation?
Yeah. I might look. This is... It's clear of everybody. And you should do that conflicting. If you do, main, main floor, total building. Because that'd be different.
True.
Some of us follow one way or the other. It's true.
Uh huh. Any other questions? I think there were additional points. Thanks. Um, hearing that none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. All right. I have two minutes. Uh, next item on the agenda is the town council's goals and objectives. And this is for 2023. And, um, the process that the town council went through this year was a little different than we've done in the past. So we had some planning meetings with our, um, finance board. And, um, the chairman of the finance board ran these for us, his planning meetings. And he was really trying to get the town council to look at, um, giving better direction to the staff when they write the budget and set some goals. And we set a lot of goals based on, um, our vision mission statement. And, um, we spent many hours on this. Now, these are the ones I'm going to read are what we came up with as a group. And they are the preliminary goals, so they're not set in stone. But this is what we have so far, which kind of helps us build our budget. And it's, it's kind of a top-down process. And then each, um, each councilman has written goals. So once I can go through the towns, um, one of the towns, then I'll have each councilman will go through theirs. So it's kind of a... We should have these up here. So, um, the first one is, and again, this is utilizing the vision mission statement. These are preliminary budget goals. So the... And it's broken down into sections similar to what the mission statement is. So the first one is infrastructure. And I have WIP twenty-one and twenty-two, but it's actually now twenty-one and twenty-three. So that number has changed. We have the Green Canyon, Tankliner, the Harbor Bridge, complete the road study and develop a plan and priority list for roads. Um, we have paved Randleberry, and that is based totally on if there's funds available. So those are the part of the infrastructure. Uh, communication was improved, the newsletter leadership and the town goals, um, to make sure that the town goals are more visible to the citizens. Um, under rural lifestyle, it was update and create nuisance and noise abatement ordinance and organize one community event. Under recreation, um, there was improve all of the season access and parking to, um, uh, area trails, improve signage for area trails. Um, and then on the financial side, we talked about revising the monthly reporting system. Our reporting system is, is, it's confusing for new councilmen, so I think it's probably really confusing for our residents. So, um, that's a big project that the finance board is working on. I'm set to argue for reserves addition, so we really want to set some strong goals for what we want in our reserves and then set minimum reserve levels. And then the last one is quality service. Um, that's complete the master plan and then, um, improve customer service. Um, we have some training set up for the staff for some customer service training. So those are our preliminary goals as a group. And then, um, next, uh, Councilor Denny? You're on next. So do you want to kind of go through?
Okay. Can you hear me clear?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, I kind of picked three areas. Uh, since I'm the liaison to the town water utility board, I had a discussion with Boyd before I put these together. And, uh, the first thing we suggested, we need to make sure communications go back and forth between the board and the council are fair and succinct. So that's number one. Uh, next one is to ensure the budget is put together correctly. Uh, three is to... There's a two thousand eleven dated, uh, objectives document that addresses water rates. Boyd brought that to my attention. He identified it needs to be updated, so I put that on there. Uh, item four was to, uh, uh, provide close oversight of the projects, water projects. Uh, so I knew what's going on and can report what's happening there back to the council and to the board. And five is to, uh, probably go out, ride with the, the people to see what's actually goes on when they do their inspections to test and whatnot. So I'm up to date on what they're doing. Under the public safety, I kind of was assigned the fire wise last year, so I just kind of kept that, uh, get that done. Um, then also last year, we approved the, the county mitigation plan. I wanted to see that that plan and our plans are consistent and working correctly. So, uh, those are questions presented by the audience last year when we approved that. What's that mean to us? So I want to make sure that, um, the plans are consistent. I've read their plan, our plan. There are, uh, quite a bit of differences, so I'd like to see our plan updated. At last, uh, I think we all should step in with safety day, make sure it happens. I mean, we all should take care of that. So I kept it on my list. And finally, uh, support the town council, attend the meetings, workshops, uh, support to develop the ordinances as necessary, help write those, uh, support the budget development as necessary. And I'd like to see us begin to put together a, a public, uh, outdoor indoor recreation plan that was identified in the, uh, master plan requirements, whatever. So I think we can all work on trying to identify amongst between us and the, in the public, what we want to see in the way of recreation. So in addition to the trails.
Thank you very much. Uh, Councilor Ellis?
Yeah. Uh, first of all, get the town year master plan going. And those of you who are familiar with the two bids that came in was a duplication of effort that had already been done. It's been re-reading. Those are out, too bad right now. Hopefully we'll get that moving quickly. Work with the staff on our missions for what we have been working on, things like that. These are two software programs coming in. They have a lot of, uh, different, uh, features in them that not everybody should be able to see. So we're going to try and clean out that. And we reback our plans for town data system, uh, since nobody can tell me exactly what's happening on that. We don't want to lose town data. Work with the F I D S advisory board to review and revise budget. Review regional database for town budgets and town fiscal issues. Revise budget planning process. And work with the P M C board to revise permit, pause records. Outgoing added to the permit process. Revise limits for solar origin generation. Clarify ones concerning parking of bodies around homes. Clarify what was made by work on open excavations. Develop ordinance on comparative testing. And work on improving inspection process and backup inspector.
Good. Thank you very much. Um, Councilor Merron?
Um, okay. So some of my goals, um, becoming more more familiar with the fishing, riding, um, for federal private freight rates. Would like to research the feasibility of us possibly containing our own fire items. And that would also fulfill the relationship with my father and mother. And then the ideas are is that we have out right now. Um, I am the lead on the development board, so, um, my goal this year is just good. I'd like to be the best in planning or just assisting in different events that might come up to help us bring in some income. Um, I would also like to be in a, um, initially, I was thinking of working, but I think this is my ability to be good, assistance of the mayor, um, finding good people to help support her, just giving our, our, you know, platform for the, um, roadworks to come to and the community to come together and get some good ideas going. Um, I mean, I would also like to attend more of the joint meetings. Um, maybe, um, I think we just did work together with them, but I'll know what they have going on as far as their other changes in the rules that are coming up. So then also, um, possibly starting to use program that will assist in some of the needs that we have with the need. Just talking with Rue, some good things that may be, um, also just with maybe in our town. And keep some youngsters busy. Is that a good idea? Um, also becoming more more familiar with our project in the process, especially as it's changing. And then starter searching and getting things towards, um, just some updating of our...
Thank you so much. Now, Councilor Merron?
As a councilwoman, my first thought was I really wanted to familiar with the ordinances, things we already have in the books. There's a lot to read there. Um, I also would like to have a great or a good understanding before we invest capital in projects like the Hardman Bridge or the Tankliner or Green Canyon. Um, so would really like to see engineering assessments and understanding the cost estimates and things like that behind those really big expenditures. I've been asked to work on trying to obtain a discreteship code for our town, which I know is something that has been attempted before without success. I'm sure some of you have experienced difficulties with deliveries of packages, especially over the last few months, so we're going to see what we can do about that. Um, it'll be a long road, road aho for sure, but I'll, I'm going to work on that. Um, I would like to continue looking at ways to improve our tracking remaining of our short-term rentals, and the town's already been making good improvements on that with the I R C program they have. We're going to look at some additional tools that will help us with that, um, to make the workload, um, a little better for the town employees. And also just, uh, looking to help with the management overall for folks that own those properties. Um, and, um, I'm working on helping with distribution and leadership of the town. I'm working on helping with distribution and leadership of the town newsletter. I'd really like to get more people to click that thing up and, or at least pick one up in the mail center. So we're trying to work on updates for that. Until certain, I currently have PAs on for the natural resources board, so I'm going to make sure I bring any of their notifications and things to the council so we can have good dual decision-making there. And then one of the top priorities for that, I mean, has been to look at intermarking solutions at our track paths. And so there's a number of things in the works there with new signage. And just, I don't know, we can better get after that and help prevent lots of parking unnecessarily on the town roads.
Excellent, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the mayor's update. There's still a lot going on. Did you have a question?
I see that excluded the Middle Branch Bridge, which in our last meeting, that I know they had that February, there was the town engineer going away for funding to involve Middle Branch Bridge and the Hardman Bridge. And we're going to do the Middle Branch Bridge first because that road is a radical, so you could open that up and then do the Hardman Bridge. Now all of a sudden, I see that it's not everyone helping out to do. So.
So I can talk about that in the mayor's update, if that's okay, which is what I'm doing next. I'll talk about the project situation. Okay? So, so, so the mayor's update, the master plan update, which Councilman Ellis already talked about, so I don't really have to talk about, we're just waiting for some information to come in. The next thing is the water, WIP twenty-one. Work's supposed to start in June and hopefully it's finished in September. WIP twenty-three, which is our newest project on Vista, we still do not have all of the documents and the go-ahead to go to bid. And so because of that, we're hoping we'll be able to go to bid in, by May, but that will probably push that project back to next year, we're assuming. Because by the time the bid process goes through and they immobilize, they're not going to be able to do anything this summer, so. Maybe that's good, my thoughts are we will save more money so we can fix this, but, but that looks like that's where we're headed on that one. On February twenty-seventh, the state land and basement board approved numerous ARPA water and sewer projects, and we applied for the bridge. Both bridges were denied. They put the priorities by the end of that meeting were water and sewer. And so we did not receive any funding. So this, and I don't know, we had talked about as far as the goals, that they should both be on there and they didn't end up on there, but that, like I said, that's a preliminary list. So they'll go back on there, I'm sure. We're supposed to get the designs from, for both bridges, which is Hardman and Middle Branch. So we should see both of those designs within the next three weeks, is what I was told today. And then there'll be three different designs for both bridges. At that point, I think the best thing to do is to make sure that we get citizen input on those three, so we're making a good decision, and so the council can make a good decision. So that's about three weeks away. So they are both on there. Road city update, he's telling me May now before he can get that done. But the road city we have now is fine, it's just that some of the roads have changed as far as the amount of users we have on the roads. And one of the big ones we looked at today was North Forest, which is definitely increasing based on our road studies, so we should have that. Staffing for the public works department, we're down three people. And so, and the challenge that we're finding is we can find operators, but those people want to sit in a grater all day, they don't want to dig ditches, basically. And that's, that's where we're having a challenge, is hiring laborers. And that's what we're sure is laborers, we've got operators, but no laborers, so. If you know anyone, send them down here to get an application, but yeah, it's, it's a challenge. So when we, like, a couple of days ago, we had a frozen water line, yesterday, we had a frozen water line, so the entire staff was there and not out doing roads, is what everyone wants them to do, so. We're working on it, we're trying to get people hired, but it's been a real challenge. It's a challenge across the state, you know, so. Anyway, now, and then our road staff is in mandatory, everyone training tomorrow in Tampa, most of them, except for one right. So hopefully we don't get too much stuck tonight. Our water operators will be at, they go to spring conference this year, and that's for wars. So that'll be in April, that's so they can get their hours to keep their license. And then we have WAP cap coming up, and that is for clerks. So we'll send two clerks this year, that starts April twelfth. Our region five land meeting is on March twenty-second, and that will be in Afton. We're all thrilled, we don't have to drive to Cheyenne, so. That will be in Afton, and then our municipal court conference, and that is for court clerks and judges, and that is the first part of May. So that's all the training that's coming up for our staff. And that's all of the updates I have right now. So the next. You can get a bit, okay. It's a little crowded, so if you want to.
That is almost three meter, that's a fiction of those bridges?
Yes.
I'm impossibly, what, what, what is it you want us to replace? Are you doing that? I want a little bit to, we've heard about what they have, have any concerns?
I do not know yet.
Would you?
I can find out.
Find out? If you can, I mean, because this is, if you know, but like, if we know what the odds are, we need to fix it or replace it, so we are not enough.
We know they're rusty, so whatever. Yeah, I'm not sure about fixing. I know that Hardman's too small, and that's the part, part of the biggest problem with that one, and it's rusty. So, but we should get good options, so we'll see what we get.
I don't know, you have a total, and I, I.
Yeah, I've been told.
Engineers, you'll say they can fix that, so we are not, at least we ask someone with official.
Yeah, I've not had, I've not had a civil engineers tell me that. So, okay.
If you have to put your, engineering number on this, we can still service.
Okay. Fix what we have. All right, we'll see what they say. So it's not, it's not our engineers doing it, it's the structural engineers, so, that is looking at this. We have a new citizen participation. One of the things that came out back in the surveys is that people wanted more time in council meeting to speak. So we came up with this citizen participation thing where you can sign up during the meeting and then we'll call and you can talk, and we didn't have any, so it's kind of like. We'll see how that goes. All right, upcoming activities after today is the Lake County ED Board meeting, and that is April third, coffee with the mayor, April eleventh. Town council workshop, April eleventh, town council meeting, April eleventh. They're busy days. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Second?
I'll say aye.
Move to second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All in favor, her motion carries now.